Welcome to the City of Sydney Council Meeting, Thursday, November 13th at 5:30. Join me in the Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Open Meetings Act is over there on the west wall over there. Are there any comments by the public?
Hi, Joe McCarron with the chamber. Just wanted to remind everybody that Tuesday, the 18th, this coming Tuesday, is our Marketing and Hometown America Action Forum. We'd love to see as many people there as possible, just to get everybody's input on what we should do moving forward. Let's make a plan together as a community. That's from 5:00 to 7:30, or 5:00 to 6:30, sorry, at the Elks here in Sydney.
Approval of the October 28, 2025 council meeting minutes.
Motion to approve the October 28, 2025 council minutes.
I'll second.
Kirkman?
Upstate.
Coons?
Yes.
Van der Guard?
Yes.
Redcliffe?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Sydney Creation District Administration Exploration, Brandy Stone.
Hi guys, Brandy Stone, leader of the Creative District. Figured I'd start with a little bit of background before we get started. The district was created to give the city a leg up in economic incentive and drive public art. Our mission is to promote, support, and expand creative industries to drive economic vitality and growth while enhancing the city's quality of life. We were officially recognized as a creative district in April of 2023. This opened us up to development grants through the Nebraska Arts Council, which we did apply for and received earlier this year. We were awarded $100,000 for a mobile stage project. We then put shoes to pavement and started working to get donations for the rest of the project. In total, we raised just a little over $141,000 for this project, and were never confronted with there being any issues with it in the beginning. However, now that there are issues that we need to work through, and a primary, the primary one being the administration of the organization, we would like to finish our project and be able to offer this great asset to the community and its events. We're asking that the council give us the next two weeks to seek out the options for the Sydney Creative District Administration slash parent organizations, since the district can reside under either a municipality or a nonprofit. So, to work through some of the issues we've come up with since, you know, the start of this project, we're kind of hoping to find a new parent organization for the Creative District. And in the very beginning, I don't know all of the reasoning behind why we went with falling under the city, but we don't have to fall under the city. This is just the route we took. It doesn't, it's not good or bad, it's just the way we are. There's really no harm in us changing administration through the state's eyes, so I've already talked to the state and they don't have a problem with it either, if you guys don't have a problem with us finding a new parent organization.
Well, I guess I'll start. Why do you want to leave the city?
So, I know that there are some concerns with liability in the stage projects, but we've put a lot of work into that. And to remove that liability concern for you guys, so you never have to worry about a potential issue with liability, we're hoping to go find a new organization. So that's the primary reason, but I do think there's going to be other projects in the future that we're going to have to worry about liability as well, because the arts go across all sorts of things. The mobile stage isn't going to be the only thing we have to worry about. I don't know what we have in the future, but just in case we come up across it again, we could move to another organization.
Well, in my eyes, moving to another organization, you're going to end up dealing with the city regardless.
Yeah.
I mean, we've got, other than painting on the side of somebody's building, if you do anything on the ground, you're going to have to come to the city.
Right. So you guys will always have.
We're going to be involved.
Right.
So I don't see a reason to move from the city, personally.
Well, another discussion has been, because there is liability with the stage project, that our funds would all go back to where they came from, which would make it so that in the future, we don't have a very good chance of ever getting that grant again.
What grant was that?
The development grant through the Nebraska Arts Council.
Was it just for the stage, or could we use it for other stuff?
No, it's just for the stage.
Speaking in terms of that grant, when it was applied for, it was also applied for with the Tin Roof District out of Potter. I've done some research, we have no documents that they actually are not still a part of it. So is $50,000 of that grant theirs and $50,000 of it's ours?
No, it's not. They chose to step back from it due to the fact that they would like to apply for the same grant in the future, and they didn't want it to look like they had already received funds in the past. This is completely our money, free and clear from Potter at this time.
But, on the city's end, we have, I have found no documentation saying it's free and clear from Potter.
Okay, so I can get that letter from Rachel Morgan up at the state.
Okay.
What does that benefit the city for, to be underneath us, or with you guys, or somebody else?
I mean, the primary reason we created the Creative District was honestly an economic driver. We still exist for Sydney, whether we're directly under the city or under a nonprofit. So you guys can still lean on us if you go for certain funding that asks if you have a creative district, which, when looking at grants, there's always a point system, and if you say you have a creative district, it'll get you more points in the hierarchy of the grant administration.
So in that aspect, then, wouldn't it be better to stay under the city?
No, because it doesn't, it doesn't matter if it's under the city or a nonprofit. You still say you have a creative district, and we're still doing what you need from us.
Do you have any ideas of other organizations that you, that would you propose to?
Yeah, we have a couple, but I don't, I don't want to throw any names out until we go talk to them. We're just asking for exploration options for the next few weeks to go forth and ask folks if they would be interested in being our parent organization. We haven't approached anyone yet until we got your approval to do so.
Another thing, I mean, I've got the plan here, the 10-year district plan, but it's Sydney's creative district.
Yes.
You leave the city, is it going to still remain Sydney? Because they're going to connect it to the city. So if you guys do something that the community doesn't like, it's going to come back on the city, even though you're.
So you're, you're kind of asking if there should be a rebrand if we leave?
Yes.
Okay, so I mean, that's something we can definitely talk about.
Is there a representative from the city on the board? Like?
What's that?
Is there somebody from the city on the board?
Some of your board members are, like Vicki Lowry is on the Creative District, and she's also on your Historic Preservation Board, as is Marva Ellinger. Kendra with Tourism is in there as well.
Was there supposed to be an employee on there too, or no?
I did not see anything in the makeup of the board that said we had to, but, I mean, that's also something you guys could decide if it stayed under the city.
When they first did it, Melissa was, Melissa was on there.
And if you, if you need a like organization and how it operates and still supports Sydney, you could look at how Scotts Bluff runs theirs. Still benefits Scotts Bluff, but they're not under the city. And they're, it's about a 50/50 split. After doing all my research with the other creative districts, on if they fall under the city or if they fall under a nonprofit, they specifically fall under the Oregon Trail Community Foundation, which I did a little research on that. We can't do that because the administrator wouldn't reside in Sydney, and that's something specifically directed from the state. Because this is a creative district for Sydney, whoever the administrator is has to be in Sydney. So you can guarantee that it won't go away from Sydney.
My concern about the $100,000 is it was given to the Creative District through the city.
Right.
So the city's responsible for it. I can't see the, just legally, the city saying, okay, you've got somebody else, here's your $100,000.
And I did ask that as well with Rachel Morgan up at the state, and she talked to their legal with the Nebraska Arts Council, who said that it would be okay, but it has to be agreed upon between the two organizations that the money would go with us.
Anybody else have any questions?
Personally, I think there's a lot of stuff we need to clean up on this end before anything can happen.
What all would you like to see?
Well, like I said, I couldn't find anything saying where Potter was out of it.
Okay.
I mean, that's, I don't want to go give another organization $100,000 and end up having to pay Potter $50,000 because we gave their money away.
Okay, so you need a letter from the state?
Need something from the state.
Okay. I can get that.
Josh?
Yeah, I would advise to Brandy, a letter from the state. So I had to do a lot of digging, because this is all new for me as well too, even in our initial conversations on there. So what I put together is the, the original intent letter came from 2021, and that was former Economic Development Director, Kim Matthews. And in there, they stated that their intentions for that Creative District Planning Committee would be representations from the city, Cheyenne County Chamber, Historic Preservation Board, and then Local Arts Community. With that, the only memorandum and understanding that I did find that was signed by former city manager, former Cheyenne County Chamber of Commerce President, and the Cheyenne County Tourism, that the city would take, as the administrative director in assist with the community outreach for the projects, take lead applicant role for the Creative District designation. So I guess, from the state's side of things, if we filled out, filled out all the information to have that designation become through the city, then what is the proper protocol in getting that removed from the city, if that's the way council decides?
In transitioning?
Yes.
The correct paperwork is what you're asking for, asking the state for the correct paperwork?
Yes, yep. And just, and just in, you know, notification that that is an okay thing to do. And then the transferring for funds, I don't know what that looks like.
That was one thing I wanted to add, that we give some supporting documentation from the state. I don't know how, probably speaking to how the reporting for that needs to happen, because we'll have to show those expenditures, correct?
Yeah, I mean, they have a, they have an annual report that we have to do through the Creative District, but it doesn't specifically go into funding.
But isn't there, would there be anything specifically for this grant?
So we will have to do an update with them, but we haven't done an update yet, because we haven't done anything with the money.
I guess my concern with giving you what we're after is how we show that in Cheyenne County.
Okay.
And how we report that back to the city.
Okay.
But that's just kind of where I'm financially.
So I'll tie that on to the paperwork, asking for the proper paperwork, and then the process for reporting on how funds were transferred, if that's the way we go.
I think that's a little premature for this conversation. We're just asking if you want to go.
Explore, right.
Yeah.
So am I digging that stuff up, or am I exploring and seeing if anyone will take us on? Or both? I can, I mean, I can at least get the letter for the Potter stuff.
Yeah.
Let's just do the exploration right now and see if that goes.
Okay, and at the next meeting, I can bring the letter for Potter, so that you can see that.
Yeah, I just don't want to get stuck with Potter coming back saying, you just gave our money away. So.
And I do want to clear up, it's, no matter what, this money goes towards a stage, and that's all it goes toward, a stage and what supports the stage. So as far as financial implications, all I'm asking is that you guys hold the money for us while we figure out what we're doing.
Was there a timeframe that we, if we didn't use it, we would lose it?
We have a little over a year.
Right, yeah.
Oh, okay.
We were awarded in April, was it April?
Yeah, I think it was April.
So you have two years to spend the money. And we have identified what stage we would go with, so we're good on that. And right now, it's just about making sure that everyone's comfortable when it comes to liability and who has ownership of the Creative District.
So just for clarification, does the city council know what's going on with the stage? Do you have any idea what's going on with the stage?
I do, because I've looked into it, but the other ones, I don't have.
So the stage contract was with a Canadian-based company. I feel like there's a lot of liability issues there when I reviewed the contract, and so I guess that's all a stage that's out there?
No, I found more stages, but.
But that's the stage you want?
But there's still liability concerns, so.
Other than that?
We talked about with the ownership of the city of Sydney owning the stage. So the original proposal for that, one of the meeting minutes I have been there, that said the city of Sydney would take full responsibility of storage, transportation, and setting up of the stage itself. And I feel like if we're going to be utilizing the stage and renting it out, then it's going to have to be city employees that are going out and setting that stage up. So that's more overtime. That's more time away from the working day that our employees would have to commit to. That's potential openness up for other worker comp liability issues if they get hurt. It's additional liability issues if anybody gets hurt in utilizing that stage as well too. Add additional premiums to our insurance. So that was my concerns that Brandy and I discussed as well too, on the liability side of things.
So what's the Canadian-based thing?
Stage line is like the top, top of the line.
I mean, as far as it being Canadian, is there something against us buying from a, a different company?
I don't know. Is there something?
No, but you made it sound like that was your liability.
Oh, well.
You thought there's some liability because of the.
I guess I was kind of confused by the question.
Was there something wrong with buying from this company?
Well, my concern with a Canadian-based company is that they, if something, if something goes wrong at all, if we have any sort of complaint, or we have, you know, with the training, because they have to come out here and do the training, right?
If there's a problem with that piece of equipment, we'd have, all legal would have to take place in Canada.
In Quebec, I believe. And it's all, it's all mediation, arbitration, but it has to happen in Quebec.
But then I later found a company out of Kansas. They're very similar in size and structure to what we already use for different events around here. And then there's another option out of Omaha, but that one is a secondhand option, so.
And I can't say, I talked to some people about the stages, and the county basically stopped renting theirs because of the liability and the stuff on it, and the time it took to send somebody out to set it up. So.
Do we have a motion to allow Brandy and the Creative District?
Do we need a motion? Do we need a motion?
I was, I was thinking the same thing. Do we need to have action for you to explore other, you know, I think that just you giving us notice on it is fine. I don't know that we need action on it.
I just, I just want to go out there and start seeing what our options are, and then you guys figuring out that way, and then, you know, then there's a whole issue.
I think if you, if you, you know, come back and say so-and-so says they want to be our parent company, and we want to leave the city, of course we need action on that. But just notifying us that you're going to go shop around, I think just that we're on notice is fine.
Okay. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is purchase of patrol vehicles. Sam?
Sorry, I'm a PowerPoint guy. You gotta bear with me on this one. So first of all, I'd like to talk about procurement of a new police truck. The objective of this is to look at procuring a new, the purchase of a police, a new police truck to start replacing older vehicles. Part of this is, I'm going to go ahead and go through our current vehicle analysis, look at what our current standards are, procurement options, and funding. So our police trucks are not exactly your home type cars. They're, they run all day long. The reason they run all day long is they're very technology-heavy. They have computers, they have cameras, they have printers, they have scanners, they have radar detectors. They turn them off and let the computers keep running, would drain the battery fairly quickly, vice versa. Logging out, logging in, every time we do it, would not allow us to respond quickly, because logging into a computer just as a base station takes time, let alone logging in all the different softwares and so forth. In addition to that, they are, it's not the mileage I'm concerned about on our current fleet, it's just the miles or hours of the engine running and idling. It's just the unnecessary nature of the, of the job. Additionally, they do, are subject to emergency response stress, meaning that a lot of times they can idle, then the next thing you know, we're going as fast as we can to emergent call. We're trying to catch the speeders, they're sharp turns, we're not exactly babying them either. They are tools to us, and we do use them professionally and appropriately, but they do get hard use. In addition, they sometimes will have passengers in there that don't want to be inside those vehicles, and which means they tend to try to kick them, stomp them, do whatever they can to destroy them. They do get beat up very quickly. With both of those things in mind, they do have accelerated maintenance needs. Again, they're not baby, they're not exactly doing everything that a normal car would do. We do have to expect a higher maintenance cost. This is our current fleet. We currently, we currently have nine vehicles. The ones that I'd like to kind of point out to you would be Car 1 with 97,000 miles, currently assigned to investigation. It's used, has more of like a crime scene investigation vehicle. It has all the tools for crime scene investigation, the stuff we don't use on every call, but we need to have available to us. Additionally, I like to look at Car 3, which is at 127,000 miles, and then Car 7, which is at nearly 139,000 miles. So those are pretty high mileage vehicles, they need a couple in the hours running. Those are pretty beat up vehicles that we're trying to kind of shoestring together to make them still work. Our current staffing needs right now is we're sitting luckily at 10 people right now. They're through, they're various stages of training, but we're, we're starting to get back up to our ranks. We are having another testing coming up on the 9th of January, which I hope to be picking up two or three more. As we start adding more officers, those demands on those vehicles are going to be more intense, and we're not going to have the ability to have one in rotation in case one needs an oil change, one breaks an axle, one, anything happens, we're not going to have the ability to maintain that. So I did go do a bunch of research of option ones. We do have an option for a state bid. It's going to be a 25 Ford Expedition. State bid's $48,000 for this. It's a three- to six-month delivery time, plus a three- to six-month outfitting time. It will come with a factory warranty. I added the words "kinda" in there, because unfortunately, once we start digging in to outfit it, we do, they're not supposed to splice into factory wiring. Unfortunately, our experience in the past has been that's not the case. Our last two that we got, some of the wires weren't plugged back in from the outfitters, and it was a pain trying to get, who's going to fix it and so forth. So I add "kinda" because there is a power train, that's usually pretty solid, but it's not 100% deal. Also going to state bid, we're also able to pick colors and features if we would like them, instead of being stuck with whatever we get. Option two would be a police vendor, closest one that I can find, that has a good reputation, is going to be out of Kansas. Their cost for the same vehicle is going to be $58,000 to start. They're also at a three- to six-month warranty, or three- to six-month delivery time. This one does, will have a full warranty though, because of the fact of that they are a police vendor, they do everything themselves. So the car we're buying from them, and then all the outfitting they'll do for themselves, so it's a one-stop shop. They will acquire a $3,000 delivery fee, and anytime we do need to take advantage of those warranty services, we'll have to get the vehicle back to them, and they're located in Kansas. So it's not exactly down the road. But again, you can pick your colors and features. Option three would be going used. We did find a, I did find one that was at a local vendor here in Sydney. This particular truck here, it's got 13,000 miles on it. They're willing to sell it to us for $44,800. Can pick it up as soon as possible, but limited warranty. They said they might throw one off in the dealership. Not sure if they're going to do that, or yes or no. But with going used, the problem is, is the inventory fluctuates so much. What's there today may not be there tomorrow. We don't know what we're getting. It could be something else. I did, luckily this one was on the lot, I was able to kind of see it. It's very clean, literally tells you a little miles for the year and everything else. For funding, capital, we're going to be using the capital equipment reserves. This is a funding source from the capital reserve, which is designed for equipment purchase and upgrades. It was approved during our council meetings when we approved the budget. We've been kind of saving for about two years to get to this point. Doing it this way, using the, doing the funding, is going to kind of promote some financial stability as far as, as far as we're not worried about paying all the maintenance fees and knowing which bill we're going to have to pay today, or the transmission's gone in this vehicle, or, it's just going to kind of be able, we're, we're going to be more stable and know what we're kind of moving forward with, instead of kind of bleeding money trying to repair older vehicles. My personal take on it, if it was up to me, I would say let's try to save the money and go the used route. I can get the vehicle here very quickly, we can kind of get it outfitted on the road. It's a very nice vehicle. I can make that kind of truck work for us. Obviously, we're using some pickup trucks now. It, money's money, and for me, if that's a possibility, that's the way I would choose to go, would be going used.
How come we go with pickups and SUVs that get less gas mileage than say a vehicle?
So a lot of times we go with the bigger vehicles, in my opinion, and this is just my opinion, is for us in the smaller city, we do not have specific jobs for each officer. So if you were to go look at, say, Omaha, New York, they may have an officer whose only job is to run traffic, or their only job to be a school resource officer, or their only job is to do X, Y, or Z job. We are asking our officers to one minute be SRO, the next minute to run traffic, the next minute to run a crime scene, the next minute to be involved in an active search warrant. So we're asking our guys to carry, wear many, many hats. Each of those hats sometimes require specialty tools. So once you start throwing in the different types of armor that the guys will use, tools, road spikes, cameras, evidence collection, the smaller vehicles get filled up really, really quick. In addition, in general, our officers are getting bigger and bigger, and they start throwing on the vests, the tasers, the batons, the guns, the, everything else, they start filling up those cars very much. As a matter of fact, some of our explorers that we have, I don't fit in, because there's a cage in the back, and I'm too tall to get into it. I look like a Bowser driving a Mario Kart. So as we kind of do that, that's why we kind of tend to go to the bigger one. In addition, here in Sydney, with our weather being what it is, we do like to have the higher ground clearance, so that we're not pushing the snow, because unfortunately, our job doesn't stop when the weather turns bad. So that's technically why we tend to go to the bigger vehicles.
How much would it cost to outfit the third one?
Luckily, right now, with some of our new hires, they're very, they were all mechanics in their previous life, so we're looking about $5,000.
So you're $50,000-ish?
And how quick?
Depending on when you guys say yes, I'll start ordering the stuff potentially tomorrow, and they can have it probably up and running before Christmas.
How soon do you need it? Say, some of them are in training right now though, right? And they won't, they won't be by themselves for another six months?
Correct. We would need it probably sooner than later though, because we're also going to be having people in FTO process, and has, currently right now, I have two vehicles which are down out of that list that you seen. When we have vehicles that are down, we don't have the spares. We end up doing what we call hot seating, which means the vehicle doesn't turn off, one officer gets out, and this officer goes in. We end up, I hate doing that, because we end up chasing maintenance problems. So as we get the other car vehicle replaced, the other ones now has a CV joint going bad, because we never turned them off. So it kind of speeds up that wear and tear, and I kind of, we end up kind of almost playing whack-a-mole with the maintenance bills, because all we're doing is switching car to car to car to car. So I have one right now that I need to send to get a coolant line replays for a turbo, but I don't want to take it out, because if I take it out, then I don't have any spares.
Where was a state bid one being able to be maintenance at, or warranty work?
State, that one, since it was coming from a Ford dealership, it would be able to be warranted and maintenance at any Ford dealership. So I think the one we've been taking now are current Fords, would it be Ogallala?
And a used, I guess a used one, you can do anywhere maintenance, right?
And with this one being a Dodge, and it being a Dodge dealership in town, we would be able to keep it all in-house for the, for the recalls that come in from manufacturers and so forth, or any type of work we would need, we'd have a Dodge dealership here to work with.
And this is in addition to your fleet, you're not going to be getting rid of something, is that correct?
As of right now, no. I like to just add to the addition. Even if I got to keep a car just for being a backup for when oil changes are done, or if accidents occur, or something gets hit on the highway, because our cars, we use our cars as blocking agents or blocking barricades for us. So I always got to be prepared to have that car be not there the next day.
You guys have any questions?
Nope.
You got preference on which one you'd want to go for?
Yeah, I guess if I was doing it, it'd be option three. That's the one I like.
Me too.
Yeah.
So.
I like the state, I like the option number one. I know it's not as quick, but I think your warranty's in.
Fair. As I asked, kind of where I was leaning too, is rather than having new, than was, happened to that vehicle previously, was they traded off within a year?
Understood.
I mean, it's 22, I guess.
I mean, look, I'll just go ahead. I mean, look, I'll just go ahead. Let's just do this. All, all motion for option number three. Um, for purchase of a patrol vehicle.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Coons?
Yes.
Bondard?
No.
Redcliffe?
We're voting for option three.
Yes.
Lee?
No.
And Kirkman?
Yes.
Guess you're going to use vehicle.
Vehicle's a vehicle right now, trust me.
What?
You got him?
No, he was first.
I was first.
Gotcha, sorry. Okay, so I have, uh, three yeses and two noes.
No, I had to vote twice, so that's.
I got it in our PowerPoint, I promise. So for this one, I'm actually going to be looking for a procurement of a new code enforcement vehicle. Um, same kind of agenda as before, looking at what we currently have, some ideas on how to move forward and procurement options. First of all, where we're currently using now is a two thousand and seven Dodge Ram. It is got high maintenance costs. Um, it's currently out of service due to a fuel tank issue. I don't want to get it fixed until we can have this conversation. Um, it's right now currently, besides not running real well. Um, it doesn't have air conditioning, climate control for the animals and proper storage for the officer's gear. Um, risky dog loading process. So right now, what Sierra is unfortunately having to do is she's exactly doing what this individual right here is. Where she's having to pick a dog up by underneath its belly and kind of put her hand by the dog. And try to lift it into the back of the tailgate. I did measure the tailgate on her current code vehicle. It's at thirty five point five inches. Some of these dogs, Sierra is very, very strong. Please don't hurt me later. Um, but these dogs are live load. They're moving, they're squirming. They don't like being carried, picked up. They not necessarily know Sierra, so they're not exactly docile. In addition, as you see right here, it puts their face right next to the dog's face, which is not a good place to be. My fear is if we keep going down the same operation, we're going to end up having some major back injuries with Sierra and or. Uh, facial reconstruction since that dog's faces might bite her face in her, in her neck area. This is our current vehicle. As you can see in this top photo right here, there is no way to organize it. It's just an open truck bed. So she drives around, things kind of get tussled, the dogs aren't secured and the animals are not secured. There is no, in the summer, that back of that tailgate is super hot and during the winter, it is super cold. Um, but all in all, like I said, it's a single cab and nowhere for her to keep her extra gear, her citations, all that fun stuff. What I'm looking at going to would be a transit van design. What this does is it actually provides a lower floor for the animal lowering, uh, for loading. It makes it easier for them to unload and unload, reducing the back of the strain on Sierra and also the animal stress as they're not getting picked up. It's just a step instead of trying to throw into the back of a pickup. We're able to do wall mounted storage units with, uh, secure tie downs to keep the equipment organized. And if the event of an accident, everything should be secured so we don't, not dealing with little missiles running around. In addition, during the summer, since it shares the same climate control, has the cab. Animals will not necessarily be comfortable, but they're not going to be super, super hot or super, super cold, which would be a good thing. Um, some of the options we're looking at is going to be the state bid. Um, I did mistype this. It's forty eight to fifty, not fifty eight to sixty. I apologize. I got a little too happy on the ten key. Um, but it's going to be the same construct, uh, constr- restrictions as before with the state bid. Um, we're going to be looking at three to six months. Her truck will not require much outfitting because we're all going to do really is add amber lights to it and stuff for her consoles inside of it. Again, we'll, we could probably do mostly in-house. Per, uh, two would be using that same police vendor. They offer the same van for forty eight thousand. Um, three to six month plus a three thousand dollar security or a delivery fee. Last one is same vendor here locally has one that they have for, that has seventeen miles on it. They were able, actually able to get it from an auction. It does have hail damage on the very, very top of it, which I have yet to be able to find when I looked at it. Everywhere else is clean. Um, but other than that, brand new with seventeen miles. If we do go used and we don't get this one, obviously if we decided to go down that way to try to save some money. Um, inventory changes daily. History, as we talked about earlier on the other vehicle, we don't know the history, we don't know the warranty, we don't know any of that fun stuff. Um, but they are willing to give us two hun- a two thousand dollar trade in on our current code truck, which would go to the cost of this vehicle. Um, same funding source as before with the capital equipment reserves. Part of this and part of why I'm pushing so hard for this is code enforcement, I do believe is overlooked pretty heavily in our society across the board, across the nation. As we've seen here lately with the chickens and, and posts on Facebook and so forth. Code enforcement is a very positive or negative reflection upon the city. They, they, they make a big difference upon how we do. We gave our code enforcement person a used pickup truck and said, go do this. And we're not providing her the same tools that we would provide our patrol officers, our water department, anybody else to make these jobs work. Including some of the safe, basic safety features. So I personally, I believe that Sierra is just as important as all my sworn officers. And sometimes depending on the day and my officer may be more important. Um. But same thing, just kind of realliterating that she faces a lot of high risk situations. Matter of fact, today she was dealing with some parody people that were pretty angry with her. And I like to make sure we're going to go that way. In addition to changing her vehicle, and I'm sure you've seen by her outfits and uniform changing. We have changed her from the police blue to being more in browns and khakis and reds. The police truck she has currently now says police down the side. This new one would say code enforcement, animal control or something to that effect on the side. It would have nothing on it that says police. So this is the kind of the last step to kind of get her moved away from having any association of being a police officer. This is because she doesn't wear body armor, she doesn't carry a gun, she has, does not have the rest powers, just a general safety thing for her. So again, I thank you for your time. Uh, my personal preference on this one again is if we can save money. I know tight, money's tight and we're basically get a brand new car or van for seven, well, seventeen miles on it. Let's save the money where we can and buy that van is my personal preference.
You had to put cages in them?
Oh, it does come, it will come with a cage wall between the passenger compartment and the cargo area. And inside of that, I know we, Sierra is specking out certain cages that we could bolt to the floor. So that if there is an accident, the cages would stay bolted to the floor.
Can you do one big cage, one for dogs, one chickens in the same?
And cats?
We could. That's an option.
Get rid of some of those chicken ideas. Okay.
So is, um, just for clarification, option two, is that going to come totally outfitted the way you'd want or would?
It would just be basic.
It would be basic, okay. Same thing, okay, got it. So you're going to be, your folks are going to be doing the work? They're confident?
Outfit or ask for a radio, guy to come out, program the radios and install radios.
Okay.
We would need to use some outside resources, but majority will be handled in-house.
But like all the mounting and getting everything in the back and your, your folks can do?
Yes, sir.
You thinking the same amount of money on this is?
On hers, hers would be cheaper.
It's going to be cheaper?
Yeah, I don't have it at that dollar, but we're looking at a couple amber lights for her. So not a whole, whole lot.
Okay.
Well, do you remember what we budgeted for?
For both vehicles altogether would be a hundred and ten.
Is that what we bud, is that what we came?
Do you have all this in your equipment reserve?
Hmm.
That high?
Yeah, we've actually, this was budgeted fairly for last year's, last round's budget. And we didn't use it. We kept it, um, enrolled it over into this year plus what addition that we added this year.
My only final question is, we got these state bids and this police vendor and yet our local guy is beating the pants off him. Is it a, is it a lesser van or is it?
No, sir. I'm got the paper here. It's, I've, it's here. I went and looked at it. It's the same van. The only difference is, is. Um, I'm not going to speak out of turn here, but they had a local auction. When I was talking about the truck, um, at a local auction, they had thirty of them that were sitting there looking for bid. I think that they were part of a hail damage thing on top of the roof and that's how we were able to get it was. That it has hail damage on the very, very top, but if anybody wants to really climb up there and see it, be my guest. I'm not, it's too tall for me to climb, so it's not, not built for that.
And, and actually, before I left the city, the last two trucks that I got, the locals beat the state bid too.
Ah, they do. I'm just surprised.
And I was just trying to find ways to shave. I mean, the dollar's a dollar in my book, so I'm trying to find a way to keep this below. What we have budgeted so that we stay on track and that we do have that wiggle room and saving five thousand, saving five thousand. Cause that, that money adds up quickly. And again, that's, I don't view it as my money. I view it as somebody else's money and I never, don't want to spend somebody else's money unless I have to, so.
What brand is it?
It's a Dodge as well.
Okay.
Dodge Ram Master.
So it's all, can all be maintained?
It'll still be the same Dodge dealership, yes.
I do like option three again.
Yeah. Do we have a motion to go option three?
I will owe, uh, motion option three, uh, for a local used. For the code enforcement slash animal control vehicle.
I'll second that.
Bondard?
Yes.
Redcliffe?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Kirkman?
Yes.
Coons?
Yes.
Motion passes. Economic development updates.
Good evening, council. Josh Hanson, interim city manager. Uh, last month, the council, community members and other stakeholders participated in an economic development workshop. Were representatives from E three presented a proposal to assume responsibility, economic development activities. Through the formation of a new economic development corporation. This proposed structure would serve both the city of Sydney and Cheyenne County, leveraging shared resources to promote business, retention, attraction and growth. Since the workshop, city staff have continued discussions with E three representatives to review the proposal and consider potential governance. And funding structures. Both city and county officials, as well as community members, have expressed interest in ensuring. That any future economic development model supports transparency, collaboration and measurable results. E three has since conducted a formal presentation of the proposed economic development corporation to the Cheyenne County commissioners. During the presentation for the commissioners at their regular scheduled meeting on November third. The commissioners suggested that E three hold a large public forum to provide another opportunity for the city and county residents to voice their concerns. Share their support and ask additional questions about the potential formation of the economic development corporation. So this meeting will be held by E three on November seventeenth at five thirty PM. At the Sydney WNCC campus, conference room one fifteen, one sixteen. At this time, nor, no formal decision has been made regarding the creation of the EDC. Or the city's potential partnership with E three. Additional feedback and direction from city council, county commissioners and key stakeholders will be essential in determining the next steps. It is my recommendation that the city mayor attend the public forum on November seventeenth. Excuse me, and that a motion be made to select an additional council member to accompany the mayor to this meeting. While it would be beneficial for all council members to attend, care should be taken to ensure that a quorum of the city council is not present. At the presentation. Alternatives, if the mayor is unable to attend, I would recommend that a motion be made to appoint vice mayor. And one other councilman to represent the city at the forum.
And just for clarification, are you asking that we be, or whoever is representing the council? Be silent and just observe and take notes and listen, or are you?
I wouldn't feel comfortable dictating that. Not there.
I mean, I can make it Monday, so. Is there a motion to have somebody else with us or join me?
I mean, I definitely.
Or who?
I'd like to go. I've been asked to go by a number of folks, um, which. I don't know. If you want to go too, again, we can, that's up to the other guys. You want to go?
I'm out. I already said I'd be out.
Burke's out. Okay, well, there you go. So you guys decide who goes.
I've been to four, three or four other, other meetings, so.
Yeah.
Okay, motion to have.
The vice mayor and the mayor, it sounds like.
Okay.
Okay.
You mean a motion for that?
Right, or do we need?
I don't think that that is a motion.
Decide who's going to a meeting.
Okay. Greg will join me. Okay, on to number seven, reporting the budget equipment purchase to council.
All right, so the purpose of this agenda is just bringing council's attention for the need for clarification and direction regarding the process for purchasing equipment. That has been budgeted and approved through the five-year reserve forecasting process as reviewed and adopted by council. Prior to the start of each new fiscal year. So specifically, staff would like guidance on whether additional council approval or presentations are required prior to proceeding with equipment purchases. That have already been approved during the annual budget review process. Uh, previous action, it's my understanding that in the past, the process for presenting equipment purchase requests to council has kind of varied. Some examples include, in some cases, any and all equipment that was going to be purchased exceeding a set dollar threshold. Require an additional presentation to council regardless of whether it had been previously approved in the adopted budget. Uh, in other instances, all departments were required to present their equipment purchase request to council. Even if the items were already included in the approved five-year reserve plan. And then most recently, some departments have only brought purchase requests to council. If the cost exceeded the amount previously budgeted or substantial changes, uh, to the scope of the specifications occurred. So it's my understanding that the five-year financial forecast for departmental equipment reserve funds has been a common practice. Well before my tenure with the city. In August of this year, I utilized the existing practice to develop a standard operating procedure to outline how to create and use a five-year financial forecast. The purpose of this SOP is to support the long-term planning for the equipment needs across city departments. And the SOP was included in my previous, uh, council review, whenever, when that was. But, uh, for the benefit of the public to illustrate kind of how the five-year, uh, financial forecasting works when we're looking at capital equipment. So suppose that the, in two thousand twenty-five, the street department identifies a need to replace a loader within the next five years. After their research, the total cost is determined to be two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Then that department would then begin budgeting fifty thousand dollars during FY twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine. With FY thirty being the purchasing date. So by accumulating these funds over that five-year period. Then the city will have necessary two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to purchase that loader during FY thirty. So this process ensures, uh, that large equipment purchases are planned for in advance. Minimizing the financial impact on any single fiscal year and supporting substantial long-term capital planning. So it's my recommendation to assist in promoting consistency and transparency across departments and notifying council of equipment purchases. Staff offers the following recommendations for council's consideration. Uh, either always require department heads to present equipment purchase requests at a council meeting, even if the equipment was previously approved during the budget process. Conditional presentations with city manager reporting to allow all departments to proceed with purchases already approved. In the five-year reserve forecast without additional council presentations. Unless the proposed purchase exceeds the previously approved budget or involves significant changes to the specifications or scope. For transparency, the city manager would report all such purchases during the normal department updates or regular council report outs.
You have any questions?
I have some comments, I guess, more so. Uh, I'm not real, I don't really care which way we go here. But at some point, this stuff needs to be scrutinized, whether it's during the budget process or whether it's individually as the, we go through the year. And I think the reason that, we usually sit in that budget meeting in this room for two hours or whatever it is. And we hardly ever even get to the capital budget. We're usually still going through all this other stuff and it kind of gets brushed over and then all of a sudden. Next thing you know, the budget's approved and we haven't even hardly looked at it or scrutinized it. So that way, I think it's helpful when they come to the meeting and ask for the, to get whatever it is. That's helpful. Now, if we move, want to change our process and actually scrutinize it at that budget meeting and like, ask the questions like, do we need this? Uh, why do we need it? That kind of stuff? Then I don't care if we, in my opinion, I don't care if we move to, uh, just go buy it and you report to us. And if it's over budget, then they maybe have to come ask for, for money. That's my two cents.
I'm with Burke on that, where we start looking at, you know, when we start cutting these items, start coming in May and June and we look at them then. And work our way through it before we come to approval in September, October. And then it like works as if it is over budget, um, by that, or if you want to say, hey, we, we're going to go ahead and move forward on this purchase. Wanted to let you guys know it wasn't the item and you bring it up like in your comments, like something like that. But I think scrutinizing those things and looking at them, I know prices change. I think scrutinizing those things and looking at them. I know prices change, so that's a problem from.
Yep, absolutely.
From May till October, those things can change, but as long as we follow within those things and have those guidelines like um, Sam has done before and uh.
Yeah, I mean, I, I like, I like both frankly. I like the budgetary process and then I like it when the guys. Talk with us too, cause, cause this uh, here in these council meetings, you know, they're, they're totally accessible on YouTube and, and everybody can, can watch and listen and maybe they weren't involved with the budgetary side of things or didn't actually get to hear that uh, during those meetings. So I like both, right?
Good point, because that budget meeting, the public never comes to it. It's always just city employees sitting in here and no public is ever, they can come, but they don't.
They've stood open meeting, but yeah, they, they just kind of don't.
So I do like, like your point there.
I do like how the departments are coming up and pushing their stuff and showing us the reasons why.
True.
I believe that, like you said, it should have been done, or could have been done in May and, or June and stuff like that, so. But I applaud them for that.
What's up, Burke?
I said, it kind of sounds like we're kind of on number one, aren't we?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah.
So keeping it the way that it currently is, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, there's been a little wiggle room here lately, right?
Yeah.
But.
Yep, absolutely.
Clarify it and from there on.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Yep.
Thank you. October 2025 budget reports, Kagan.
Good evening, council, uh, city finance director, uh, Kagan Carwin. Uh, kind of jumping into October, this is the uh, first month of our fiscal year, so kind of some ups and downs uh, that we'll talk about here. Jumping into the, the general uh, fund revenue breakdown, uh, property tax, DMV, we were up 26.4,000 to last year, or 25 uh, point eight percent. Again, this is property tax and uh, motor vehicle fees were up. Uh, sales occupation tax was down 8.7,000 from last year, or negative 4.02%. Uh, the, the call out here is our occupation tax uh, side was, was the strong point in this category. Uh, fees for service, you were looking at a positive 6,000 uh, to last year, or 16.32%. Cemetery was positive, golf was positive, and transportation and inspection were the uh, the, the downsides um, to this area. State, federal, county, up 22.5K from last year, or 224.73%. Uh, this is just a reimbursement from transportation uh, in that regards. Uh, franchise and admin fees up 2.8K uh, from last year, or 35.01%. Um, this was mainly just telephone fee revenue, so um, just that, that telephone franchise fee aspect. On the other side, we're up $836.92 from LY uh, or 16.66%. Again, this is just interest uh, increasing, so uh, kind of jumping into a revenue over expenses. Um, like I said, we had some ups and downs, general fund down 72,000, street up 70,000, electric down 38,000, water down 72,000, sewer down 17,000, landfill up 15,000. As far as the budget goes, um, general fund is 4.3% expensed over an 8% fiscal year. Uh, 1.4 for street, 5.8 for electric, 9.4 for water, 5.6 for sewer, 6.7% for landfill. So everybody's kind of fallen in line uh, with where their budgetary numbers are at. Um, a lot of the reason we saw, you know, kind of some escalation in numbers this month was our insurance payouts came in the month of October. So that kind of, that kind of hit all at once. Some of those are paid on a quarterly basis, so they do carry a little bit of higher uh, percentage in the uh, general ledger breakdown uh, on the line item. We did have some like, in golf, we do some pre-ordering for like fertilizer around this timeframe and stuff like that uh, through there to make sure that the whole year is kind of lined out. Uh, get a little bit of a discount for doing that. And then kind of into the uh, proprietary functions, uh, electric uh, obviously is kind of getting hit by the increase with uh, mean. Um, that's kind of the big call out for them. Water had some maintenance uh, take place that was kind of unexpected, that kind of hit us right out of the gates as well as the water agreement with, I don't remember that company's name off the top of my head, but it's in contract that it just takes place every October, so you'll see that probably in the next uh, future months. I can get you the name of that company. Um, I just don't remember who we contracted with. You might, Rob, I don't.
You talking the tank?
Yeah.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure who they are.
Yeah, I'm not sure what their, what their name is off the top of my head, but.
Yeah.
But that's a pretty big uh, bill and that's a one-time bill for the year. Uh, just.
Aguirre Iron.
Yes, yes, that is them. Um, that just happens to hit right at the beginning of the fiscal year, so. Um, but overall, everything, uh, like I said, kind of some ups and downs um, to, to kind of work through here as we, you know, venture off into uh, fiscal year 26. Kind of looking at golf aquatic breakdown as far as uh, year over year. On the revenue side, golf was able to uh, create um, $656 in positive revenue, so. Had a pretty good October, I guess, that we're still seeing positivity out there. I think warm weather is going to, you know, kind of carry that hopefully into, you know, later months here, but. I guess, do you have any questions for me at this point in time?
Well, it's early, Kagan, you know?
I know, it is early, it is early.
Early, right?
Yeah, so it's. It's early.
Got a little bit of a long haul, I guess. I mean, the only, the only questions I guess I got are the, kind of my standard go-tos, like, you know, any, any surprises, I guess, positive surprises, negative surprises?
Um, I mean, no, I, I wouldn't say there's anything that was, was necessarily like super uh, surprising by, by our uh, our, our.
Don't worry about that.
Sorry. Revenues or expenditures, um, no, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say anything jumped out at to me. Like, like I said, we're, we're in that first month of the fiscal year. Um, you know, obviously, the, the breakdowns are tough, um, and they, they are sometimes a big hit depending on that piece of equipment, so. Uh, those are just things we can't plan for. Um, so it's unfortunate when those, when those ones kind of jump out at us. I would say that's probably our biggest surprise. Uh, as an overall, as we, we had some maintenance side of things that kind of took place that, you know, obviously, we, we don't, we don't want it to. Um, but it, it's just those things that just tend to happen. Um, nothing you can, can really control, so.
Yeah, but you mean, you think it'll level out over?
Yeah, I think, I think it'll, you know, we're, we're gonna probably still see our ups and downs um, through this fiscal year. I think, you know, kind of looking at last fiscal year, we're probably going to carry pretty close to that. Um, would be my guess that we'll, we'll see, so, you know, in the future months, we'll see the good and the positive and then, you know, have some downs. Obviously, I mean, through this fiscal year, we're, we're going to get hit with that chargeback from the state um, on the sales tax side. So I mean, that's definitely gonna, you know, kind of hit the uh, general fund side of things um, to, to have to cover that, but. But I think overall, we'll, we'll, we'll see, you know, the positives as we get into some later months. Obviously, we're, we're kind of, for the general fund specific, we're kind of rolling out of that season that we have the aquatics and or we have the golfing, you know, it, it at a consistent rate, right? Obviously, I think those are going to tailor back some. Um, I mean, obviously aquatic will, because it's closed. Um, but you know, I mean, we'll, we'll still do and watch this budget uh, in a manner that, that needs to be, you know, watched and then taken careful consideration of purchases as well as, you know, things that could expand revenues, so.
Excellent. Thank you.
Anything else? Appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Is there a motion to approve the budget?
So moved.
Redcliffe?
So second.
Redcliffe?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Kirkman?
Yes.
Coons?
Yes.
Bondgar?
Yes. October 2025 claims, Jeremy Lee. Do you find any problems?
Oh, it'll look good. Once we got everything squared away.
Is this your first time?
Oh, yeah. Made some changes, but they're good changes, so we're good. Well, they look good. There's some clarifications that we got fixed, but we're good.
We're working on your um, clarifications too and be, being more descriptive.
I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve the claims?
I'll motion to approve the claims.
I would second that motion.
Lee?
Yes.
Kirkman?
Yes.
Coons?
Yes.
Bondgar?
Yes.
Redcliffe?
Yes.
Ordinance 1883 amending 1048.06 electric service, service verbiage.
So like I brought to the last council meeting, uh, just amending the process with this specific ordinance in identifying those customers that would be moving to small general service rate and large general service rate. Um, so again, just minor changes as far as identifying them during the reporting period on there. And then if they do hit that 50 kilowatt threshold within that reporting period, as a small generation would move to a large generation customer for the rest of that fiscal year. Um, once that year's completed, another review process would go in, so. The last ordinance on there would put them on for the remaining of the fiscal year, plus one year after that, even if they did not hit that 50 kilowatt. Uh, additional verbiage we put in there was that the city would provide written notices for those individuals who reach a demand of 40 kilowatt and work with them and trying some good utility practices to make sure that they're not hitting that large general service unless that is something that they're expected to do, then, then we'll let them ride with it, but. Again, those are the only changes in there. You can cross-reference the rate side of things. It is the same as the ordinance on American publishing. Um, just those, those two sections in there for.
Thanks for that clarification.
Is there a motion to designate ordinance 18?
Question, just to make, so, we're still going to send them notice quarterly, right?
Yes.
That if they reach the 40, that we're going to send out notifications that, hey, so that you hit it at that 40 quarterly?
Yep, so we'll do meter readings uh, during the prior two billing periods on there, so that'll be issued October 15th, December 15th, February 15th, April, June and August 15th. And then if we identify that they're hitting up to that 40 or getting close to that 50 kilowatt threshold, then we'll make sure we send those note, those written notifications to make them aware of that.
So we could be sending out notifications every quarter for those people?
Yes. Yep.
And then if they hit the 50, is it automatically in there or is there still that grace for the first time?
If they hit the 50, the way we had it worded in there, I know during the additional edits that there was a grace period, but my understanding, Kim, correct me if I'm wrong, they hit that 50 during that reporting period, they're going to go on it. We're just going to be more cognizant about watching when they hit those 40s and stuff like that and let them know, you know, if you do this, this, that and the other, then you're, you're prone to hitting 50 kilowatts, so.
Okay.
There was some in all the different past meetings that we've had and the different um, edits within that ordinance that did state that they would get that one time. But since the la- the third reading of this for the last go-around, it has been consistent with uh, just notifying them at 40 or higher, but if they do hit that 50 during that reporting period, they will go on a large uh, service for that fiscal year. And then the next reporting, if they can stay off of it, they'll get removed off. So it's, it's just pretty much saving them from having to go for potentially a year and a half to two years, depending on when they've hit it in the past.
Okay. Is there a motion to designate ordinance 1883?
I'll motion to designate ordinance 1883.
There are second.
Second.
Kirkman?
Yes.
Coons?
Yes.
Bondgar?
Yes.
Redcliffe? Lee?
Yes.
Clerk, could you read the title?
An ordinance to amend part 10, streets utilities and public um, public services code, title four, utilities, chapter 1048, electricity, section 10486, 104806, electric service, large general service of the city of Sydney, Cheyenne County, Nebraska, to repeal such section as herefore existing and to provide for the effective date of this ordinance.
A motion to waive the three readings.
I'll motion to waive the three readings.
I'll second that.
Coons?
Yes.
Bondgar?
Yes.
Redcliffe?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Kirkman?
Yes.
A motion to pass ordinance 1883.
I'll make the motion to pass. Ordinance 1883.
I'll second.
Bondgar?
Yes.
Redcliffe?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Kirkman?
Yes.
Coons?
Yes.
Clerk, could you read the number, please?
1883.
A motion to publish, publish ordinance 1883.
I'll motion to publish ordinance 1883.
And I'll second.
Redcliffe?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Kirkman?
Yes.
Coons?
Yes.
Bondgar?
Yes. Okay. Ordinance 1884, amending 1048.066, electric service, large power contract rate.
Oops, ordinance 1884 is establishing a new service rate for those individuals that would need a peak demand in excess of 5,000 kilowatts. So again, going back to, we haven't had anything like this before. There's a lot of talk around the nation of data centers, so we just wanted to make sure as a city, we're protecting ourselves. If that is some interest that comes in here, then, you know, a, a company that's using 1.5 megawatts isn't paying for the same that are using 50 kilowatts on demand on there. So it would be determined uh, based off contract rate and terms for specific industries that are coming in there that need uh, that 5,000 or more peak demand kilowatt hours.
Is there any questions? A motion to designate ordinance 1884.
So moved.
Second.
Lee?
Yes.
Kirkman?
Yes.
Coons?
Yes.
Bondgar?
Yes.
Redcliffe?
Yes.
Clerk, could you read the title, please?
An ordinance to amend part 10, streets utilities and public services code, title four, utilities, chapter 1048, electricity of the Sydney municipal code to add a new section, 1048.067, electrical service, large power contract rate of the city of Sydney, Cheyenne County, Nebraska, and to provide for the effective date of this ordinance.
A motion to waive the three readings.
I'll motion to waive the three readings.
I'll second.
Kirkman?
Yes.
Coons?
Yes.
Bondgar?
Yes.
Redcliffe?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
A motion to pass ordinance 1884.
I'll motion to pass ordinance 1884.
I'll second it.
Coons?
Yes.
Bondgar?
Yes.
Redcliffe?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Kirkman?
Yes.
Clerk, could you read the number, please?
1884.
A motion to publish ordinance 1884.
I'll make a motion to publish it. Ordinance eight, 1884.
Second.
Kirkman.
Bondgar?
Yes.
Redcliffe?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Kirkman?
Yes.
Coons?
Yes.
Just hanging out.
Yep.
City managers report.
All right, yeah, just want to start off by saying uh, huge thank you and appreciation, the Sydney Potter Gurley Volunteer Fire Departments, uh, our local police, our sheriffs, our, our region 21 emergency management, um, they've had a pretty long last couple of days on there with a residential fire here in town and then dealing for about 48 hours with the gas fire up north on there, so. I know it's busy, um, really appreciative. We have a lot of city staff that also volunteer on the fire department as well too, so not only are they putting in an all-day's work here, then they're going out and responding to that as well too, so. Again, just, just really appreciate that and just wanted to make that known. Uh, light committee, uh, we do, we talked about it a little bit today during our staff meetings. So Kagan, Tom and I are going to figure out time next week to go and look at all the different lights on there and see what needs to be replaced. We're aware that there is a strand, looks like it's dipping down there in front of. That there is a strand, looks like it's dipping down there in front of Ace Hardware, so we'll start there, get that strung back up and then just go check out some lights, and we got about fifteen hundred. Replacement bulbs, uh Tom did a drive through, I wanna say, last Friday evening, said he knows just a few out on there, so shouldn't take us much time, but we'll we'll get up there and get them known for the holiday season on there. And then just a quick note for parks, that the bathrooms are officially closed for the season, so just wanna let everyone make them aware of that, and that that's all I have, gentlemen.
Question for you on that light thing?
Mm-hmm.
As far as insurance and stuff like that, if you fall through a roof, what happens?
Uh, it's not during working hours, it's volunteer hours, I won't sue the city.
Okay.
It's not city property, I I don't think I'd have any claim anyway. We gotta wait till it's nighttime.
Representatives of the council on there.
Yep.
So I'm not going up there.
It's not on city time, so I mean.
It was all done at night.
We'll give permission from the business owners, we'll have a waiver in the sign. We'll be very careful.
Yeah.
Anything else for me? Nope, alright.
Lori, do you got anything? Kendra? Joe, or Sam? Kagan?
Uh, would just like to wish my son a happy birthday, it's a big day for me. Right now, you're sitting on sixteen viewers still with us, thirty five total views, so.
Jeremy?
Oh, got nothing tonight.
I'll wish the Raiders good luck tomorrow in their states on my final playoff game, that's a big deal. Hopefully pull one out, but good luck to them.
I don't have anything today. Uh. Burke took all mine, so.
I did see some kids down there, like on the old Dairy Queen, cleaning up um trash out there, so thanks to them.
Yeah, I wanna say, good luck to the state and thank you to all the first responders for the last couple of days and everything and.
We had a pretty good trunk or treat.
Yeah, I wanna say, how was the trunk or treat?
We had forty trunks and probably eight hundred and two thousand kids. Even with the, even with the football playoff.
Wow.
Now, we the, we don't have to go to closed session, right, for this, we can do the. Um selection committee and open, right?
That's correct, yeah, you can just stay in open session and move forward with your next agenda item.
Okay. Um, let's keep it open and let's go for the purpose of discussing the selection committee, well, we, there was only three. Um people that applied for the selection committee, it was Tony Jones, Jason Pettick, and Joshua Watchhorn. Were the three, and we were looking for three, and I think those three are good choices.
Yep, yeah.
So, I mean. Do we have to have a motion?
I would probably do a motion to add them to your selection committee since we went through the application.
Do we gotta do each one individual?
No, you can just do a um a blanket motion to accept all three applicants.
I'll make a motion that we approve Josh Watchhorn, Jason Pettick, and Tony Jones to the selection committee for city manager search.
I'll second that.
Redcliffe?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Kirkman?
Yes.
Coons?
Yes.
Bondard?
Yes. Now, we can stay open and uh discuss the duties of the selection committee. So what are some of the duties you would like to see out of the selection committee?
I think working with HR, um with our lawyer, um come up with a. Um job description within that committee. How we're going to go about advertising for that commi- for those positions or for that position. And also weeding out or going through the the list and bringing top five to the council.
Do we wanna do the job description as council or that leaves it to committee?
I imagine already, there is one, right?
We have one written.
It's just a matter of, does it, does it need amended, I suppose?
Yeah.
We'll just have to amend it, I, what we could do is um our selection committee could get together, review it, amend it, and bring it back to council for approval before advertising it.
Okay with that.
What's our timeframe on that?
I'd say try to get started here pretty soon.
This week, next week? Or we can have that ready for the council in two weeks?
There's only two councilmen, right, so, okay, so we. The twenty fifth of November.
Next council? Twenty fifth? So we'd have to meet, what, next week?
Next week.
Okay. We can do that. Reach out to all three of them and. Let them know. I guess we'd have to pick out a date, I guess, and. And I think. Is that it?
The thing that we're missing on that could be, that could be. Looked at as far as the committee and to to speed up the process, I guess what I'm looking at, is there stuff that we're gonna have to come forward to the council later to ask?
Budget mean or something?
Yeah, salaries and stuff like that, if all that stuff can kinda be made up, I mean, that could all be made up later, I guess, but. Do we wanna? Look at that? As a committee?
Like the starting wage and everything?
Yeah, what do we wanna look at?
Yeah, that's gonna be a discussion within your selection committee, and then, you know, you're gonna come with a proposal to city council. This is what, this is what we're looking at, this is what we're finding.
Okay. And so I think we are.
I motion to approve those.
Yeah.
Deals that we suggested.
On our job duties for the selection committee are at this point to create a job. Create a job description, um create an advertising plan to bring the top five um applicants to the city council.
It's a great motion, I'll second that one. Yep.
Lee?
I do got a question before we move forward on it, with that, cuz we did talk about hiring a hiring committee or a hiring firm to look help with us. Is that committee deciding on whether or not to do that, to go with a hiring firm or not to go with a hiring firm, is that?
That is up to you to decide whether you want to administer that responsibility onto your selection committee.
Yeah.
So that's in addition to their duties, right?
If they would, if they would like to, if you would, if city council would like to put the responsibility onto the selection committee to hire an HR firm to assist with the search of a um city manager, that is part of this discussion.
Good with that?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. Lee?
Yes.
Kirkman?
Yes.
Coons?
Yes.
Bondard?
Yes.
Redcliffe?
Yes.
Selecting community members, we already did that, so I think we are done, aren't we?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Do I need to make a motion that we adjourn?
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
Kirkman?
Yes.
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Redcliffe?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.